Hello, testing. Can you hear out there? Okay, I'm glad you can. Sorry that we're late. We had a, what they call a non-meeting with our attorney. So we're just finishing with that. Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order at 6:10 for the zoning board of adjustments on June 2nd, 2025. And the roll call, the roll call is voting members will be myself, Suzanne Ryan Chair, Audrey Klein Vice Chair, Kate McMahon is a voting member, Jody Persson is a voting member, and Chuck Sumner is a voting member. And we have with us tonight, Sabette, Sabette whatever. Sabette, what's your last name? Strowman. And we also have with us this evening, Shawna Sanders is our interim planner, and she is from the Lakes Region Planning Commission, and she is their executive director. And we thank her for standing in until we get our planner, which is supposed to be August 4th. Will be attending our first meeting. So tonight, we have seven applications. We started our site visit at 4:30. We met with our attorney from 5:00 to 6:00. And what I'm going through this far is that we may not get through all the applications tonight. And we'll sort of know when they get to a later hour as to how we're doing. We do have the availability of the great hall, which is really contingent upon whether we have a meeting, if we have to continue a meeting. And I have sent the board members these dates of June 9th, June 23rd, or June 30th, if we have to continue a meeting. And we won't know until we get through the majority of the applications to see how much energy and brain power we have left. So some of the abbreviated rules of the meeting are all parties will have an opportunity to speak. The applicant is the first public speaking. And then be aware that when I close the hearing, it is very unlikely that we will reopen for comment while we go into deliberations. So make sure you wave your hand if you want to be recognized. I want to make sure everybody gets heard. With that said, the first case that we have tonight is Chuck, will you read the notice for Rawlingsford on Lerner Street? Read it into the record.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. This is continued public hearing for Alton Rawlingsford Ford LLC tax map number 218-112, 125 Lerner Street, case number 07AAD-25. Public hearing for an appeal of administrative decision under Article 175, Section 43(c), non-conforming structures. Public hearing continued from May 5th.
Yes, would you please reintroduce yourself?
Of course, I'm Jared. I'm a special counsel for the applicant who is looking to address a few misbehind in the LLC that owns property at issue with the law of memory. Last time we were here, about a month ago, we made the evidence in a case that the applicant has not, in fact, abandoned or previously non-conformly used his property. In the meantime, I believe the law is being different, counsel, if you've done. Also, in the meantime, we submitted some copies of true work and time and things like that that have been done over the years. It definitely was a good practice to keep them. Oh, as I would say, that speaks to a couple of things. That probably was testimony in the first, second record that one routine maintenance has been kept up with his property, which was one of the exceptions in ordinance for abandonment. I guess, again, most of our arguments that what needs to be looked at is the intent of the owner with respect to the Lawler test from the pain states of the 70s that says that the rule that, maybe just take the record, say it one more time, unless preempted by the ordinance, successful abandonment depends on three factors of two factors, intention to abandon or relinquish your use, and or and some overreact or failure to act which carries the implication that the owner might claim is overtaking or interest in the use, unless preempted by ordinance. Again, the point of the argument is that the definition of abandonment in ordinance is a little unclear. If it had said, hey, you don't have any occupants for more than a year, you're abandoning, then that would be a problem. But if it doesn't say that, therefore, if he has not abandoned, if he pays attention to that place up, and he's a nice man and he likes to do that, it will find our favor. That said, I don't think any delay for any more of the arguments, or set them all on the record.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions? I think I will go to the public first at this time. Are there any public members that would like to speak either for or against, or just speak about the application? Seeing none. Board members, do you have any questions?
I guess I have a question. And I know we talked about this before, but could you repeat for me what we talked about last time as far as actual improvements to the property? I think last time you had a, you're a carpenter tradesman with you who testified to something, which I can't remember exactly.
Correct. Yeah, we had the contractor for last time. My apologies if you need to. But yeah, he testified to the fact that for several months leading up to the application that was denied, he was in communication with the, say, nobody that denied us. And, you know, everything seemed, I guess, the people were on some story. So all of a sudden, it comes in with the verdict, and it's still denied about five years. But over the years, leading up to that, I believe, and Bob will probably speak to some of the agents, who, I don't know, did some work on the interior here and there, kind of fix things up. You're obviously continuing to pay taxes, you're continuing to pay insurance, you're continuing to pay utilities, and all of it. But, you know, we kept up with all of that, again, the plowing, the pre-work. And of course, probably those who opened in 2021, I believe, was when they came to town and tried to grow from three units to four units. They were told no. He accepted that. But nonetheless, it was further evident, we're here talking about intent, he's, we're the intent of this owner, who is not again, he's trying to follow. Is he guilty of dragging this thing a little bit? Sure. But that's not the same as.
Sure. But so specifically, what did the contractor do between, you know, like you said, from '21 to now?
Are you able to speak to that? I don't remember off the top of my head. It is on. The light guy is? It's a little lighter.
Now it's not on.
It doesn't sound like it's on.
I don't know which one, but it's on.
Can you put your mouth right up to it and see?
Could be the battery.
It's on.
It's on, but nobody's home.
You want to take that microphone out there or the cord reach?
That's better.
How's that?
Much better.
Keep that, keep that right up to your mouth.
Yes, yep. So Bob Flannery, one of the principals of the LLC. So we've, we've done odds and ends. We painted the building at one point.
Interior or exterior?
Exterior.
Okay.
Right, so we.
Do you know when, when that was done?
Let's see, maybe 2019, maybe? That's a guess of that timeframe. I can't tell you exactly off the top of my head. Now, I know that, I think in the last meeting, I wanted to mention, but somebody had brought up that like the steps were removed from the front of the building or something to that effect. And, and that was when the water department came in and put a new water main in, they brought that water lane, water main right through where the step area would have been. So.
So there's two sets of steps. So the water main went this way, not just this way?
It went parallel to the building. Right, so obviously, we would need a building permit to go do that as well as replace those steps, but that was all part of the grand plan of, you know, restoring this building.
When did that happen?
Whenever they did the water main, that might have been.
Get that microphone up there.
Can you hear me now? Yep, sorry. It's hard. I got to bend over for it. That might have been around 2020, but I, but I, again, I can't recall with accuracy on those dates.
Any interior work done?
A little bit, just some, some demolition work kind of thing. Just in preparation of getting a building permit.
That was just prior to the application for the four-unit building that was denied?
It, it might have been between then and, yeah, it, it was ongoing. So, yeah, so it started then, little bit got done then, a little bit more got done later, but yes.
I've got something I'm kind of curious about here. It says, under abandonment, our section in the zoning ordinance, 17543(c), it says abandonment, any non-conforming use. All right, it doesn't say any non-conforming structure that is discontinued or abandoned for a period of one year. That building has been vacant for more than a year. That use has been abandoned for more than a year. It's different than the structure. So I think we need to think a little bit more about what our ordinance says. It doesn't, it doesn't say structure. It says use. And we know, all of us know that live in town, that it's been abandoned as far as use goes.
And the Lawler test does speak to use specifically. It doesn't speak to structures. So again, you have to look at his intent. If, if, if abandonment, this is, this is the whole point I'm trying to make about the Lawler test. If abandonment means nobody's living there, then your ordinance should say abandonment means nobody's living there. Because you have two competing cases. I said this the last time I was here, folks. Okay, so it was two competing cases. There's the Lawler test from the 70s, and then there's how the McKenzie case turned out in the 2010s. Now, in the Lawler case, the ordinance just said, you know, if the use is abandoned for so long, it's, it's over. All right, and that's when the Supreme Court said, no, you can't just do that. This has to be a higher standard than that. It has to be a higher burden than that on, on the government. Okay, so you have to apply this test, but it has to look at the intent of the owner. Later, in McKenzie, in the 2010s, that was a case where the Supreme Court said, no, you all abandon that test. And in there, you had to look at the ordinance itself. And in the case of McKenzie, this is how, this is the very first sentence of that ordinance at issue in the McKenzie case. Any structure damaged by fire, deterioration, or other causality event of 70, to the extent of 75% or more of a floor area in a square foot and is not reconstructed with one year, in one year, shall constitute discontinuance and abandonment. That is very specific. Fire had to happen. Had to burn this much of it, and you had to do nothing for, for a year. And that one, the Supreme Court said, that is specific enough that that preempts the Lawler test. But here, what we're saying is that this ordinance doesn't. It just says it's abandoned. Well, if it, if not having people there, because again, routine maintenance is one of your exceptions in your ordinance. I mean, I could make the case under that as well. I mean, has he been a little slow about it? Okay, but he's been doing it, paying the taxes, getting the tree moved, doing the demo work, so on and so forth. And that's what this comes down to. And that's, I'll leave it at that unless you have more questions.
Well, we know the use has been abandoned. We know the building and structure has been abandoned. The exterior has had nothing done to it. The front steps are non, exist are nonusable. So it's going to be a board decision as to how we interpret that 17543(c). And I have no receipts for work being done, and it's your obligation to provide to us the information that would verify what work has been done since '21. I'm using the tax card as a reference.
Well, we can dig a little deeper if you like, but I would just push back on you and say that, because you just said it has been abandoned, and we're saying it has not. All right, and that's what's in dispute here. And the reason those steps were removed again was the water main came through, and to put them back, he needs a building permit.
Well, the, the party has applied for different permits, but that's as far as it's gone. They've never received any permits. So.
But what would be the problem with getting a permit to put the steps back?
I think what happened is we got shut down. I mean, it was all.
But that was a totally different permit. That wasn't a permit to replace steps that had been removed for the water main.
Well, it is his intent. You just heard him on the record saying it is intent to replace those steps at some point. I mean, he's trying to do the deterioration.
I understand that. But, but you just said, you made it sound like he couldn't get a building permit to replace the steps, when in fact, he could have gotten a building permit to replace the steps.
I don't know if he could now. Now, if he's been shut down and there's, and the town's telling him he's abandoned the property, how can he go back and get permit to do the steps?
The town has said he's abandoned the use.
Right, so he can't get a permit.
Steps are, steps are not, and any maintenance that, that would have been done, this routine maintenance above a certain level, would have taken a building permit.
Well, for whatever the clarity you need for, you've heard him go on record saying it is his intent to replace those steps, but I don't think I want to go down a rabbit hole about steps. I mean, the point is, we went in for, to renovate the interior of this building, were denied.
Yep. I don't think I have any more questions for the applicant.
Questions? Questions? Okay, I'm gonna, anybody else want to speak before I close the public hearing? No? No? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
I closed the public hearing for the purposes of deliberations. So this is a little different than what we're accustomed to. This is not for a variance. This is to either uphold or not agree with the building code office's interpretation of 170, what did I say it was, 17543(c).
So there's a couple of things that I'm weighing. One, when the building permit was applied for, to go to four units instead of three, they didn't, they didn't then say, well, okay, we're going to do three units. They didn't do anything. So I, I don't quite understand why that would not be essentially walking away from that use at that time. We don't.
Audrey, what was the year?
I don't have that in front of me. We went through that with the last, at the last meeting, if anybody wants to look that up.
I think it was before '21. At any rate.
So, so, so that's one issue that I say, well, if, if they weren't going to abandon the use as an apartment building, and they got turned down for a four unit, they were prepared to renovate the building for four units at that point. They submitted a building permit, yet then they didn't go ahead and renovate it for the three units that, that they had had before. And I don't quite understand why that wouldn't be part of walking away from the use of that building. So that's one thing. My other thing is the routine maintenance.
Audrey, could I, just a quick point, not to, you know, not defending or, or going either one way or the other, but I think the answer there was that was occurred right around the time of COVID. So I think his answer at that point was that he had trouble, that things were shut down, and, and everybody kind of came to a standstill, and it was difficult to get help back in there around the time of, of the denial of going from three to four units. Just, this.
Shayna, do you have that in front of you by any chance?
Yeah, so I do, well, I was gonna, I was just gonna say, we do have a building permit signed by the owner with a copy of the check from November of 2024 that was submitted, I believe, by the applicant. There is, there is no received receipt from the town. There's no.
Isn't that the one that we're hearing right now?
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Let me go on to my other points to see if you can find the date of that other one. So the, the routine, routine maintenance, it's just not maintenance, it's routine maintenance. And we don't have any receipts for what that routine maintenance might be. That would be a couple, three times a year, or, you know, something routine. And, and I don't see the routine part in the maintenance. And also, there's no permits for anything that might have been done, including, as far as I can tell, no paperwork for demo inside the building, which would have been required in that kind of building for asbestos and possibly lead. I think, I think the, it's not just that the building. possibly lead. I think it's not just that the building wasn't occupied. They left it in a condition where it could not be occupied because they did not replace the steps. So they didn't have any intent of trying to rent it or do enough renovation to rent it for quite a while without having those steps there. So those are three things that are on my mind. Did you find a date?
Nothing in the file. Yeah, nothing submitted.
Okay.
No, the only thing that I have here is just what you're saying. There were attempts to apply for building improvement.
It is in the file. I said, I think it's in the building file in the box. If it's important, we can find it.
While Shawna's looking for that, again, I go back to the 2021 tax code, and it indicates that there's been no improvements to the building. I agree with you, Audrey. We have no evidence that says that they have made a good faith effort in continuing remodeling that building. Submitting an application doesn't C Y A. You've got to get an approval. An approval would have shown, yes, they're moving forward in the right direction. There are no approvals for any of that work. So...
Yeah, it looks like there's building permits from, sorry, 1994, 2004, '97. There was an electrical permit applied for in 2021 that was...
That was the one that went with the four-unit application?
Yep, returned, because it was not to code. And that's it. That's everything. And then the 2020...
Those are applications, not permits.
Correct. Sorry, those are applications.
Use the word permits. That needs to be corrected. Those are applications.
I'm sorry, the, yes. Yeah, that is true.
Any other questions from any other board members?
I just want to say, one of the case that's been cited about the, the one where the court did agree that it was abandoned, that was absolutely, all the way on this side, abandoned. It was completely walked away from for a long time. Their standard doesn't mean that there isn't something less abandoned that's still abandoned. They did, you know, they said there had to be an intent, but they were talking about that. There was clearly an intent there. We don't know what, you know, that what they would say, that that intent matches this intent. That's why we're here, to look at the pieces. Does that, did that make any sense?
I, I'm a little hesitant to, may I speak now?
What's that?
I would like to say something.
Yeah, well, put that microphone right in your mouth.
All right.
Because you're soft spoken anyway.
I'm a little hesitant to declare this as abandoned. I don't think I agree with the code officer. It's certainly not been any sort of speedy work done on the property, which is in pretty bad disrepair. I am persuaded that COVID interfered with a lot of things, not just the availability of tradespeople, but also funding. The, I saw that the tree removal that they did cost $4,000, and it's clear that renovating this place will take a fair amount of money, continuing with what has been done. So I'm not sure what the owner's availability of funds is right now, but I don't like the idea of closing the door. And I think there has been evidence, perhaps not as much as some would like, but some evidence of intent to continue the property. So I'm opposed to the administrative decision.
Jody, speaking to the microphone.
Real quick, I agree with everything Kate just said. I just want to say that I agree with what she said.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to make a motion. Everybody else...
Chuck have anything to say?
Did you want to say something?
No, I have nothing more to add.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to uphold the building inspector's interpretation of 175, what was the number?
43C.
175 what?
43.
43.
C. That it's been abandoned.
As he wrote on his decision document on 22525.
Second.
Discussion on the second. Hearing none. I'll call a roll call vote. Those in favor? Audrey?
In favor of upholding the decision.
Kate?
Not in favor.
Not in favor.
Ryan in favor?
I'm not in favor. I'd like to, he's showing good faith in applying for a permit to continue the work, and quite honestly, I'd like to see him continue the work.
Okay, the motion fails. Then another motion.
In the affirmative. You're going to make a motion to overturn the decision of the...
Oh, I guess that's the term I was looking for. Thank you. Yes. I move to overturn the decision of the code officer.
Relevant to...
Relevant to considering the building abandoned and permitting him to continue with work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Chuck?
Yes.
Ryan, no?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Your motion passes. That's it. By the way, that decision can be appealed within 30 days.
Correct.
Okay, now, hold on. Let me get this put away, and then we'll move on to the second one, which is a public hearing for 180 Sewell Road. Chuck, would you just comment about that we did do a site visit on there?
Yes, we did a site visit. I think this is their third appearance, and we did a...
I think it was April?
April and then May. So in April, we did conduct a site visit, and we saw the properties at that point. And I believe everybody was present at that site visit.
Okay. And would you read what the legal notice was, so the public understands what this meeting is for?
This is a public hearing for 180 Sewell Road LLC, tax map 229-30. 180 Sewell Road, case number 16-V-25. Public hearing for variance under section 175-43A2 of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance. Formal submission, public hearing to commence.
Good evening. My name is Amy Bentley. I am the architect working with our homeowner, Andy and Mary Allen. Mary is not here with us tonight. And Randy Tetro from Norway Plains has been working with us on some preliminary shoreland and site coverage numbers as well. So we are here for the third time, although under a new section number that asks for expansion of a non-conforming use. So we have a property on Sewell Road with a house and a guest house, and it is being considered two dwelling units on the same property, therefore the non-conforming use. So I think I'll just read through the five criteria, and then we could talk a little bit about the property, and then any questions you have. Does that sound good? So the variance will not be in contrary to public interest. The modification doesn't seem to have any negative effect. It's continuing a use, a non-conforming use, a house and a guest house. I do have highlighted on that map that there are a number of houses within five or six to the right and left that also have the same house, guest house, other accessory buildings. I think that we are a pretty typical lot on Sewell Road, with the one exception that we are one of the largest lots on Sewell Road. So not contrary to public interest. We have six buildings on this property right now. We are proposing to reduce the number of buildings to four, which would bring us into conformity as far as the amount of structures we're allowed on a site. We're going to pull all of the buildings. We have three, two buildings and a side yard setback. The main house is currently in the shoreline setback, and there is an accessory garden shed that's in a wetland setback. So we're proposing to basically clean up this lot, and we're able to bring all buildings into conformity from a dimensional standpoint on the site with regards to setbacks, water setbacks, as well as lot coverage, and even looking to improve the lot coverage as far as what is impervious surface through landscaping and modern, you know, permeable pavers and whatnot. So we believe that this will be beneficial to public interest in the town. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because, again, we are taking non-conforming structures, and we are able to make everything conform. Again, our ask is expanding 1910 buildings that are small to current day buildings, but we have that restriction because of the two dwelling units. Substantial justice is done. This is one of the largest lots on Sewell Road. We're asking that our buildings be updated and sized appropriate to today's time. No expansion or limiting this to 25% expansion on the current small buildings that are there are not really in scale and don't take into account that this is a large property on Sewell Road. So we're asking that you consider the lot size as we ask to increase the building size of, again, older buildings on the property. We feel that the two dwelling use is in keeping with the neighborhood. As you can see, the properties to the right and left have guest houses, as do many along the street that are, some of them are highlighted just in our section of the street and neighborhood there. The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. Again, we're looking to improve the lot. We do have some substantial runoff that comes from across the street through two culverts that dump on our property. We would do some better landscaping, rain gardens mitigating that water. We have to mitigate that water. We lost a large pine tree this past winter with water coming down and pooling. It fell towards the lake, not to our house or the neighboring house, but it was a, you know, I don't know how tall it was, but say it was a 70-foot-tall pine tree. And there is another one also in that same zone. So we think that cleaning up the property, proper water management will increase or help the values of surrounding properties. We're taking some buildings that are close to the neighboring lot, and we're pulling them in, so we will be able to vegetate better between our property and the adjacent property. The special conditions of our property, I have spoken a little bit about them, but again, I think our property is special on this street because it's at 1.6 acres. It's one of the largest lots on Sewell Road. We can hold some larger buildings on this lot. We're limited by the existing structures that were built back in 1920s. I think I said 1910 before. I think they were early 1920s. And then, so lot size, small existing buildings, and then also that mitigation of water coming off of Sewell Road that isn't even our own water. I mean, obviously, we have to mitigate our own water, but we're inheriting a lot of runoff from upland properties. By spacing these, by keeping the use of the two buildings, the main house and the guest house, we're able to take what we could technically do by right with one building. Again, we meet all our lot coverages in separating these structures so that we do have some more soft scape and landscape in between the buildings and on the property, so that we can create some of these rain gardens and slow down the flow of water. So for those reasons, I think that creates some special conditions on the lot. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the purposes of the ordinance applicable to the application and the specific application of that provision to the property. Again, our request for expansion above 25% of the smaller buildings is in proportion with our lot and other modern developments along this street. And we are able to meet all of the other zoning criteria. We're not asking for setbacks or anything else. It's, you know, the enforcement of these two dwelling units and expanding that use. And then, again, we think the use is reasonable because there are other properties along the street, main house, guest house. It's in character of the neighborhood. I did want to speak, they had, when we last spoke, they asked, you asked us to look at the expansion of use from the gross floor area of the building. So the use is considered usable, livable, heated space. And I just wanted to point out those numbers. The existing gross floor area of the existing house, from a basement, first floor, second floor, and a little bit of attic space, is 3,940 square feet. House two, which is the guest house, is 580 square feet. So our total livable square foot as it exists today is 4,520 square feet. So when we look at expanding the 25, we could go up to 25% with a special permit. Once we go over 25%, then we need the variance is what we're asking for. We think it's reasonable, again, because of lot size and being able to meet all of our other criteria, improve the shoreline, improve impermeable coverage. Our proposed house, which would include some finished basement, finished space in the basement, a first floor and a second floor, goes up to 9,104. And the guest house is a first floor and a little bit of loft space on the second floor at 1,500 square feet, giving us a total of 10,604. So we're looking at increasing from 4,520 up to 10,604 on our lot. Did I miss anything?
Okay, I think I forgot to open the public hearing.
Oh, jeez. Don't make me do that again.
No, 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 no. Just a formality. Are there any questions from the audience? Are any people that would like to speak in favor? Are there anyone that would like to speak opposed? Or anyone that would like to just speak in general or ask questions in general about this application? I see someone. Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record, even though we say hello, we know who you are.
Good evening. My name is Dave Bolduc. I'm the Chair of the Wolfboro Heritage Commission, and just want to speak about some of our concerns as a commission. The commission is, was created to advocate for preserving the historic, cultural, built environment of Wolfboro. And what I'm learning about this plan is that a significant historical building will be taken away from the town. And that goes against what the Heritage Commission advocates for. The 2020 master plan addresses historic properties, and I would consider this historic property, given that it was built in 1910, and it's substantial. It has quite a presence on the water. And the master plan says historic properties should be protected whenever possible from demolition, deterioration, and major incompatible alterations through collaboration with property owner and the Heritage Commission. So unfortunately, we've never had a chance to have any conversations. So, unfortunately, we've never had a chance to have any conversations and that's, that's my fault, that's our fault. I've only heard about this development in the last week. But I would, I would encourage more conversations about this building and, or the buildings and, and whether it's prudent to take it down. It's the, it's the residential shorefront district, which has been identified as critical to, to the town's cultural identity. Just would love the opportunity to talk with the owners and/or their representatives about a way that maybe they could preserve the majority of the elements of the, the predominant structures, maybe consider an addition as opposed to just removing all, all, all features that are, that are currently there. I limit my comments to that.
I have a question.
Sure.
For you. So, I, I understand where the Heritage Commission is coming from, but we're looking at only the difference between one large structure or a structure and another structure. From a heritage standpoint, do you think it's historically accurate to have more smaller buildings on a lot or one big building on a lot?
I think that in, in, on properties like this, it's the dominant structure that is, that is most advantageous to preserve because I think that creates the whole look of the property.
Which, what's advantageous to preserve, the multiple buildings or one building, one bigger building?
I don't think I'm prepared to answer that right now.
Is the scattering of small buildings on, on the shorefoot, is that a traditional, something you see traditionally?
No, it's, I think, again, shooting from the hip on this. I mean, I think most properties will have a dominant structure and it's not uncommon for, for there to be a guest house as well.
Is that like a historic piece of, of many of the shorefront properties?
Right. I think that it's very, in, in that area or that level of, of, of the neighborhood and everything speaks, that's, that's not uncommon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I got a question.
Sorry?
Put the microphone.
Yeah, I just, I understand what the heritage is all about and everything, but I got a question for you, but.
Sure.
Do you think a citizen of this country has a right to buy a piece of property and do what they want with it in, you know, in, in, in this country? Should they be able to buy a piece of property?
Well, if they go, I mean, they're going through the process as it's outlined.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they, if, I think that we have, you know, we want to advocate for what we think is healthy growth.
I understand where you're coming from.
And, and I respect the, the process that they have to go through, but at the same time, I need to advocate from the point of view that the Heritage Commission is coming from.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
With all, with all due respect, the questions that we're supposed to ask are legal to our ordinance, not of someone's opinion. So, that's not a proper question.
Could I ask a, could I ask a possibly non or improper question also, please? And that is, maybe just a suggestion. You mentioned that you'd only heard about this case a week ago and, you know, I admire you're advocating for older, you know, more historic buildings on the, on the lake or in town, but is there a way you can stay more up to date so that you could possibly talk with owners?
I, I assume full responsibility for not being on top of this case and it's, it's my fault. I should have known about this way, way before now and I blame nobody but myself.
Can I suggest that the planning board and the zoning board have an automatic agenda? If you sign up, you, you get the agenda in your email, so that might be an easy way to keep track of what's coming up.
We've, we've, we've been very active on several fronts in the last few months. We just finished an award ceremony that went off really well. We're in the middle of working with the planning board on a demolition review ordinance. So, I, I missed it, my fault.
Okay.
Well, in, in, in their defense, they are not on, they're not copied on our legal notices.
It would be a good idea.
So, there's, they are not expected to scan our website every week to see what we're doing.
That's not what I was suggesting.
Yeah, but no, but I'm saying in their defense, they're not copied, so.
I, I understand I came in at the 11th hour.
I think it's something when we get, when we get an old property like this, we add them in on the copies.
Sure.
That might be in our new rules of procedure, no? I think that's in our new rules of procedure, is it not?
You'd like to know what?
It's in our new rules of procedure that, that commissions and boards get copied.
Well, I think we can just do it administratively. I just asked Shawna to add, let the secretary know.
Yes.
Without going through that whole process.
I think it's already there.
You think so?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Good. Anybody else on the board? Anyone else in the public? And again, please bring that microphone right down to you.
Is this good enough? Anne Blodgett, I'm a former member of the Heritage Commission, was, was around when it began, and I'm really pleased to see that they're making some more moves towards policy support of planning. I think the town is very sensitized to tear downs due to some unsightly tear downs that have happened with the replacement buildings being way disproportionate. So, it's, yes, it's somebody's right to tear it down, but if you, if you are a member of this community and you came here because you care about the beauty of it, there should be some dialogue that goes on. As for Audrey's question, I don't think it's relevant to what, I support what Dave said, but it has nothing to do with it. It's about maintaining a structure that has merit.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of that or?
I would like to ask them, have they been and seen the house? Okay, so commenting on whether it's worthy or not without seeing it.
You need to address the board only, I'm sorry.
Can you give us your name, please?
My name's Andy Allen and I'm the owner of the property. And the house is full of asbestos, it's full of lead paint, it's rotting everywhere, it's, the foundation's rotting, collapsing. It was built on bricks in 1910 or stones and stuff, so the whole thing is just, you know, it'll cost three times more to, to rebuild something. The rooms are small, I mean, there's nothing, nothing, it was an old Sears and Roebuck house that they bought for $2,900. It's not something that was handcrafted by, you know, the world's best, you know, carpenters in the world. It's just, it was an old, you know, modular home and it's seen its day.
I have a technical question about the site.
Okay, go ahead, Audrey.
So, one of the, one of your unique features is the drainage issue coming off the road and, where's my little site plan? I guess I wanted to ask, you know, there's, there's, all the lots are on the road. I'm assuming that some drainage comes off the road to each of those other lots, but why, why do you think that yours is more unique in that respect than the others?
And I, this probably happens on other lots as well, but there are two upland driveways with culverts directly at the bottom of their driveways on the, the other side of the street that then come and dump on our property. So, we are literally taking all of the neighbors' drainage that runs into these culverts at the bottom of their driveway and dumps onto our lot, which then goes down to the water. It's taken out trees, it's created a lot of erosion and so it's, I think it's, it's not necessarily unique to only this property, but it is unique to our property as out of, you know, what I could see in the neighboring properties. And this map here with the, the site plan, I know I just turned it, but shows, you know, it comes off of 28 and 29, their driveways directly, and it dumps into where, near where our little carriage house, the existing, you know, old garage is. It pools and then it makes its way all the way down to the lake entirely on our property. So, because of that, it does limit our use of the property because we do need to maintain and, and deal with that and pay for the, the mitigation for that water coming down. So, it is a bit of a hardship for us in this particular property.
So, does any, so those are, I don't see the numbers on it. Can you just run over here and tell me if these are the two lots you're talking about? Are you talking about this lot and this lot?
Yes.
Okay. And so, is there anything impacting your lot from the, from the Sewell Point Road that, that tees out on Sewell Road?
I mean, we get runoff from Sewell Road, but I assume any properties on the downhill side do. These are really two culverts that are, when we get those heavy rains, the ones, we've been getting a lot more rain, water, heavy rains, you know, it, it, there's times where it's active water running down the side of our lot from those two points, not just, you know, the street runoff, but everybody's got that.
Right. It's just that your frontage seems much longer than most everybody else's. So, it seems like there might be more impact from the properties around just on your property, not your property, his property.
Sewell Point Road looks like, you know, looks like they're almost in direct, you know, line of fire from runoff coming down.
Well, that's why there must be a culprit under Sewell Point Road that.
One would hope, yes.
I don't know. Just, okay, that's it.
Anybody else in the public, from the board? Then I'm going to close the public hearing and we will deliberate. And that means we have to go through the five criteria. Okay, one and two, we usually put together because they, I don't think you can approve one without the other. One, the variance is not contrary to the public interest. And two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And the purpose of, oh, what the heck number is it? The purpose of this zoning shorefront residential 17562. I'd like to read it into the record. Purpose, the shorefront residential. The purpose of this district.
Make sure you get into your microphone, please.
It's not working?
It is, but you might.
Get closer.
Closer.
I'm right on top of it.
A little bit.
I guess because I was looking down. Okay. The purpose of this district is to maintain the integrity of the existing shorefront residential district and protect the shorefront from overdevelopment. Further, the town recognizes the importance of implementing water quality protection standards in order to protect the shoreline with the town of Wolfboro since they are among the most valuable and fragile natural resources and that the protection of these shorelands is essential to maintain the integrity and exceptional quality of the town waters. And I think that the key part that I was interested in was maintain the integrity of the existing shorefront residential district and protect the, the shorefront. I think for me, it's talking about the integrity of the, the district, the zone. It's not just about a neighborhood. When you read more about, oftentimes they interchange the word between district and zone and neighborhood, but it is for the zone and that's why I went back to purpose. But, and, and these, these two, the ordinance must not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. I mean, the, the requests should not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. So, does anybody have anything they'd like to say on that?
Well, I, I think the water quality, this meets that standard because right now that, that runoff is not treated at all and it's going right into the lake with no treatment and nor direction. So, that meets the water quality standard in the shorefront that you just read. And I would say that to maintain the existing shorefront without overdevelopment, that given what's there, the fact that we're looking at multiple buildings is not unusual and the density is not unusual given the site of the property, given the size of the property. And so, I think it does meet the first two criteria.
Yeah, it is, it is, in my words, a trade-off as far as how they develop the site, which we don't have control over, but they've indicated that they are going to improve the site. Chuck, do you have something?
Yes. You know, one of the other things they're doing is they're moving the property back away from the shoreline so that it's now in conformance, so it is actually enhancing the, the shoreline zone.
And the sidelines for that matter.
Exactly.
The value, number, number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Well, we haven't, we haven't had any real estate information on that one way or the other, so I have no expert testimony on that. Anybody else?
No, but you skipped over number three, so I just think we have to.
I'm sorry, I did.
I think we have to talk to it, speak to it.
Thank you. All right, so I'll backtrack. Number three, substantial justice is done. The benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by the harm to the general public or other individuals.
So, I guess if we had a historic ordinance, there might be something to speak there, but we, we don't. And so, I think that there's no, there's no harm to the general public in allowing this to be developed, meeting the other standards.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. And number four, the.
You did that one.
Property values.
Yeah.
We have no evidence of one way or the other. So, here's the one, the big one. Number five, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. There is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property and the proposed use is a reasonable one.
So, in a way, I guess I, I, I do think that the runoff is specific to this property and more of a hardship and is a hardship given that I don't think, because, also because this parcel is so large, to fully develop the parcel with one building is not, it's a special condition because it's so large. They, to have just one huge gigantic building on this property would not be beneficial. And so, to that extent, I would say that it's kind of like an inverse hardship. Those are my two for that one.
Okay. Well, the zoning restriction has to show that it, that it's different from any other properties in the zone and, or any similarly situated properties within the zone. And those of us who've traveled over Sewell Road know that there are bigger lots, it's a mix of big lots, small lots. It's not that they're exclusive, that they have the biggest lot. There are other big lots. There are other big lots. It's not enough to just demonstrate that the property would be difficult to use. Even if those things are true, the applicant must still demonstrate that something about this property means it is burdened by the zoning restriction in a way that is different from other similarly situated properties. And it's not different from other similarly situated properties. And they have an alternative course of action, which is 175-43A2, should this be denied, which is a non-conforming use, occupying a portion of the parcel of land or a portion of a building may by special exception be expanded no more than 25% of the portion of the parcel of land or building dedicated to the non-conforming use at the time of passage of this section, provided however that the non-conforming, oh, that's to do with signs. So should they be denied, they're not out of the ballpark, they're still in the game. So...
So I think that goes exactly to what I was saying, that the size of the parcel, if, if they were to go for a special exception for only 25% increase is improportionate to the side of their, size of their parcel. They, although this is not an accessory dwelling unit because it's a cottage, if they were to have a detached accessory dwelling unit, the impact would be the same as they're suggesting. So I think that it's not out of scale to allow the second dwelling to be what is essentially less than 30% of the main new house. And I think that's reasonable, given the size of the property and the need to break it up due to the drainage.
I would agree with that.
So are you saying then you feel that the proposed expansion or use is a reasonable one?
I do.
Okay.
Me too.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve case number 16V25, tax map 229-30, 180 Sewell Road for a variance under section 175-43A2.
Second.
Okay. And conditions, I'll read those. Should this be approved, all federal and state permits shall be received prior to construction, including but not limited to the town of Wolfboro building permit. The approval is per all documentation submitted on...
May 8th.
What?
May 8th.
May 8th, 2025. And those are the documents that we're using for this hearing. The application as submitted to the ZBA does not satisfy the submittal requirements for a building permit or site plan approval. The notice of decision shall be recorded at Carroll County Register of Deeds and the applicant shall be responsible for payment of all recording fees. The variance shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of approval or is further extended by local ordinance or the zoning board of adjustments for good cause in accordance with RSA 674-33IAA. The appeal process pursuant to RSA 6772 and aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the county superior court within 30 days of the date of the board voted to approve or disapprove the application. And in special instances, the appealing party may appeal to the housing board of appeals under 677-415 and 679-6. So now roll call, we got a second. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, roll call vote. Those in favor, Audrey?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yes.
Ryan, no?
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's four to, four to one, you got your approval. Now let me put this stuff away before we go to the next one. Case number Sewell Road, Sewell Road, Sewell Road. I want that. Okay. Okay. Okay, and the third case was my agenda. Let's throw it back up there.
Chuck can read, this is the site visit one.
Yeah, no, I didn't, here it is.
Do you want me to read?
The third case was to be Atwell on Elm and because the applicant didn't provide us with the material that we needed to notify the abudders, it was an incomplete application and will not be heard. It's possibly that it could be heard in July. It's up to the applicant to bring in the necessary material and Shawna will assist with that. So the fourth case is...
Fourth case is Annie DeBir. Annie or Ann?
Annie.
Ann. You introduced yourself as Annie, I think.
Yes.
Anyway, Annie and Andre DeBir. Tax map number 142-009, 704 North Main Street, case number 12-SE-25, public hearing for a special exception under section 175-43A2, non-conforming structures of the Wolfboro planning and zoning ordinance, formal submission and public hearing.
I don't know if anybody else got the letter from...
Just a minute.
Hutter, but I got three, so I'm passing the other two around.
Oh, okay.
You got three also.
Um...
Two.
Yeah, it's, it's attached, it's the last, it's the last attachment in our package.
Oh, I see, there's one.
All right, hold on. Do you have the legal notice there in front of you when you pack it? Instead of the agenda?
Do we get the legal notice normally?
I clipped it out of the paper, but I don't have it with me.
All right.
Suzanne, this is, this is the legal notice, isn't it?
No, the legal notice.
I guess I don't.
That's what you're supposed to be reading from, this, this document here.
All right, well, I just read that.
Yeah. And then, and then...
I did, I read that.
Yeah, then read this. Notice this was given too.
You want me to read that too?
Yeah. Tell Sarah did it.
So you want me to read?
Yeah.
Copies were given to town manager, building official, police chief, fire chief, conservation commission, assessor, municipal electric department, public work department, file, Ann DeBir, Herbert Vinnickholm, Piping Rock Motel, Potter Trust, James J. Walker, and Annie, Ann T. Vinnickholm.
Thank you. Okay. And so now I'll open the public hearing and would you please identify yourself as the applicant and your name?
Yes.
And state it for the record loud and clear, right into the microphone.
Yes, Annie DeBir, and I'm applying for a special exception for 704 North Main Street, Clearwater Lodges.
And if you'd like to explain...
Explain what the project is, yes.
Or read from the document.
Yes, so you would like me to read from the document?
Whichever is, you're more comfortable doing.
So it's for, it's for in addition to an existing structure, a 30 by 40 building to be used for laundry facilities, a bathroom for our seasonal staff, as well as storage. This does not, I think Mr. Hutter spoke to, spoke to some of these items specifically, but this does not change, to speak to number one, sites, site suitability. There's plenty of usable space for this addition to the existing building and it has adequate access and no environmental constraints. All construction would be taking place after Columbus Day weekend in the fall and prior to Memorial Day weekend in the spring, so as not to impact seasonal cottages at Clearwater and Piping Rock Resort. There will be no, it does not affect any pedestrian or vehicular traffic. No additional services of the town are required and all services are currently available and adequate for the site. And consideration has been given to all the items above, which are, speak to the site plan, parking, traffic, circulation, open space, fencing, screening, landscaping, signage, commercial vehicles, and lighting impact. Immediate neighborhood integrity, there's no change or impact to the neighborhood integrity. The addition will not be visible from the road. Impact on property values, there'll be no impact on adjacent property values. The proposed use of the structure is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan, and we understand that to be true.
Board members, any questions?
I just wanted to report that we did in fact have a site visit today.
Do you want to do that under public comment?
So do you want me to do it later then?
Did you open the public?
The, the letter. Is that what you're speaking about, the letter? Or you're just talking about...
No.
Oh, the site, oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I misheard you.
I wanted to report that there was a site visit at 4:30 this afternoon. All board members and one alternate were present. We met with Ann and Andre. We looked at the site, everything looked, you know, everything was clear to us as to where the building was going to go. There was some discussion about septic, which is probably not relevant, but we, we covered all the bases and we were satisfied with what we saw.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Board members, do you have any questions or do you want me to open it to public? And then come back to you?
We're going to read, you were going to read through these later.
Yeah, we're going to have to go through that.
Okay, yeah, no questions at this time.
But I'd like to get public comment.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address this. Anyone in favor, anyone opposed, anyone just in general would like to speak to this application? Okay, seeing none. Board members, questions to the applicant about the proposal?
Well, as we go through these ones?
No, no, we do this after.
So if I have a specific question about something that...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can ask a question, but we do these, we go through these during deliberations, one through eight, just like we do the variance. But any questions you have?
Okay, well, yeah, I just want to make it clear that under number four, there is to be a, a septic system designed and built for this purpose as, as a condition of our approval.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
So then seeing there's no further public comment and we now have to close the public hearing and deliberate on the special exception points. Number one, site, site suitability. This includes adequate usable space, adequate access, and absence of environmental constraints, steep slopes, floodplain. How does the board feel about number one? Would you like to discuss number one?
I would say it's, it's a suitable site. It's well back from the water and it's 131 feet to the closest boundary line, so there's plenty of room for it.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Number two, immediate neighborhood impact.
If anything, this is going to reduce trip generation.
Well, you know, I'm just thinking, under public comment, I should have had that letter read. So I'll do that after we get through this.
All right.
Don't want to disturb the, the flow here. So immediate neighborhood impact, that the proposal is not detrimental, injurious, obnoxious or offensive to the abutting properties in particular and to the neighborhood in general. Typical impacts which extend beyond the proposed site include excessive noise, trips, dust, smoke, fumes, inappropriate hours. I don't think number two is applicable.
Well, they, they say that they, they were doing laundry off-site, so that, all that traffic is no longer going to, it's going to be reduced.
Well, I don't think, I don't think number two applies, it's for a lau, it's for a laundry.
Excessive trip generation is what I'm addressing.
She's saying that there'll be less of it.
There'll be less trips because they don't send, not sending their laundry out to be done.
Okay, thank you. Number three, that there'll be no undue nuisance or serious hazards to pedestrians or vehicle traffic, including the location and design of accessways and off-street parking.
It doesn't change anything as far as I can tell.
Not applicable, really.
Okay. Number four, availability of public services and facilities. The following services and facilities are available and adequate to serve the needs of the use designated and proposed sewer, water, storm drainage, fire, street, parks, schools. Audrey, that's the one you were...
Yeah, they're not, they're not public services, but they are services that they will address with a new septic system potential. They'll be checking the water to see if there's adequate water for the use and the fire protection for the building.
Okay.
Can I just clarify, is that a replacement septic system, larger or a second septic?
Whatever the DES approves for the use that they're proposing.
Okay.
An approves, a new approved septic system designed for the use.
It would be a new one, a new septic system.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the units have their own holding tanks and so this will be just for the laundry.
Okay.
Although they could design it to take some, it, they could do any number of things, but they need, their existing one is not adequate.
But that's, they did explain to us how that facility in general operates with this.
Yes.
So I was just trying to get that into the...
Yeah, it's, yeah, the cabins apparently have just holding tanks that they pay to have pumped out and there's no septic for, for the, for the cabin, so there's no septic leachate going into the lake at all.
But as they applied to us and said at the site visit, while that could be a possible option, their main objective is to put in a, a laundry facility there and put in a new septic system for that.
Yep.
So that's our impression and understanding. Okay. Number five, appropriateness of site consideration shall be given to the following, parking, traffic, open space, fencing, screening, landscaping, signs, commercial vehicle, light impact, lighting impact.
We didn't discuss lighting impact.
We didn't, but...
I think they do have pretty good vegetation along the property line, which again is quite a distance away, so I don't think fencing or screening is necessarily, needs to be added, although they have, they're going to have site plan review, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee any big spotlights because it would disturb their own abutting...
That too, right.
Abutting apartments. Okay. Number six, immediate neighborhood integrity, that the use and establishment, and established use patents being weighed with recent changed trends in the neighborhood. Is there any impact from this? As they say, it's not even visible from the road.
It's a, it's a non-conforming use, but this is almost like what's called a natural expansion. They're not, they're not doing something different or a lot more than they were doing. They're not, they're not doing something different or a lot more than they were doing, they're just adding a piece that supports what they're doing.
Yeah, it's an expansion of. Number seven, impact on property values, that the proposed use will not cause or contribute to decline in property values of adjacent properties. And the adjacent properties are pretty much their own cabins, although that's condominiumized.
Well, the other adjacent property is also a commercial overnight facility.
And number eight, the proposed use of structure is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan.
Yep. Yes, to allow non-conforming uses to continue.
So Suzanne, you mentioned neighborhood integrity, and you wanted me to read a letter from Mike Hutter, who's a neighbor, he lives across the street, and if you'd like, I would read his letter in its entirety.
I do like, I would like it to be read, and I think that although I overlooked it under public comment, I think it's a nice time to read it under number seven, impact on property values, the proposed use will not cause or contribute to the decline in property values. And since he's an abutter, certainly that letter should be read.
Mike Hutter of the Hutter Trust, and Mike Hutter is well-known to most of us, I think. He wrote, "As trustee on behalf of the abutting Hutter Trust property, we write to advise the zoning board of adjustment that we support and De Beers' application for a special exception under 17543A2. We have lived across the street from the De Beers and Clearwater lodges for 41 years and have known them to be good and considerate neighbors. With specific regard to the eight stipulations required to the noted ordinance, we state the following: site suitability. The site has been more than, has more than enough room to accommodate the expansion. There are no environmental concerns we have ever seen or heard of in that area of the lot. The immediate, number two, the immediate neighborhood will be more, no more impacted than it is when the De Beers do regular annual tree maintenance work on the massive pines on the lot. Number three, there will be no traffic or pedestrian impact save when construction work is being done. Number four, town water and public health and safety services are already established for the lot in question. Number five, commercial services such as tree maintenance are already regularly performed on the site without disturbing this or butter. Signage and lighting already exist on site. Screening is not necessary as existing side, street-side pines screen the area where the expansion is planned. Number six, we do not expect the character of the neighborhood to be changed by this expansion. Number seven, we expect no negative change to the value of our property if the application is approved. And number eight, the ordinance in question has, was written to allow for managed growth, so this application is in keeping with this ordinance's spirit. Having written part of the current Wolfboro master plan, one of us can say with some certainty that this application in no way does an injustice to its intent. Thank you for your attention in regards of the Hutter Trust. Mike and Pat Hutter.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from anyone? Nope, nope. All right, I make a motion to approve case number 12SE25MAP142009704-NorthMain Street for a special exception under 17543A2, non-conforming structure for, in accordance with the application and plan we received on April 8, 2025, and for a 30-by-40 addition to the existing building per the plans of 33125, and there's two drawings here by Vinny Combe Jr. And with the same conditions, we record these, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with the same conditions that I've just previously read, all federal and state permits shall be received prior to construction, including but not limited to the town of Wolfboro building permit. The approval is per all documentation submitted on three, April 8, 2025. The application as submitted to the ZVA does not satisfy the submittal requirements for the building permit or site plan approval. The notice of decision shall be recorded at Carroll County Registry ADs, and the applicant shall be responsible for all payments and recording fees. The special exception shall be valid and exercised within two years from the date of approval, or is further extended by local ordinance or by the zoning board of adjustment for good cause in accordance with 674331AA. And there is an appeal process for this, and pursuant to 6772, any aggrieved party may appeal the decision to the county superior court within 30 days of the date the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or in special instances to the housing board of appeals, 6774, 67715, and 6796. Roll call vote.
Wait a minute, I'll second the motion, but I have a question. Audrey, did you want to make the new septic system condition of approval? You mentioned?
Yeah, I did.
Thank you.
I did say that, so.
Okay, you want to put it into words so that the transcriber can put it down?
Okay, as a condition, and a septic system that meets New Hampshire DES requirements for the, for the use is approved and installed.
And that use is a laundry?
The use is the building, there's a bathroom, there's a laundry.
The building, there's a bathroom, there's laundry.
Bathroom and laundry.
Whatever they put in the building.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a second as amended. Procedurally, I guess we vote on the motion, then the second, but I think we can just do it all in one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so roll call vote. Audrey, in favor?
Yes.
Kate, in favor?
Yes.
Jody, in favor?
Yes.
Ryan, in favor?
Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous, you've got your approval. Okay, now, again, let me put this all away. We're doing pretty good.
Can we take a five-minute break?
I'm sorry?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure, I know, anybody would like to take a break with us, five minutes?
Hello. Thank you for your patience. Are we back on? Okay, thank you. All right, so this is one that everyone's been so patient, and it's a little unusual in that it's one piece of property with three requests. One is for a variance, well, two are for variance, and the third request is for a special exception. And for my ease in following, I've numbered them one, two, and three. And so I will ask Chuck, I will open the public hearing and ask Chuck to read into the record the legal notice and talk about the site visit.
This is a hearing for Alan and Felicity Freund, QPR Trust, and Heather M. Murdoch and Michael K. Oddland. Tax map number 193-001, 11 Poplar Island, case number 13-V-25, public hearing for a variance under section 17543A1C of the Wolfborough Planning and Zoning Ordinance. Formal submission and public hearing. There was a, since this is on an island, there was no in-person site visit. There was a video, two videos actually submitted to the planning office, and to the best of my knowledge, everybody on the board saw this video. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
The plans and materials related to this application can be reviewed at the Planning and Development Office. Copies have been sent to the town manager, building official, police chief, fire chief, conservation commission, assessor, municipal electric department, public works department, and fire department. Alan Freund, QPR Trust, Felicity Freund, QPR Trust, Nixon Lemille, Norman Stewart, George Barrett, Thomas and Karen O'Rourke, sorry, Rebecca S. Arnold, revocable trust, Rebecca S. Arnold trustee, David Brockway Jr., and Murdoch/Oddland.
Okay. Hello. Would you introduce yourself as the representative for this application?
Yes, my name is John Chase. I'm here on behalf of Heather Murdoch and Keith Oddland for 11 Poplar Island.
Okay, and would you please, on this first application, go through the five criteria? You may read them or address them ad lib.
Okay, I'm happy to do that in the spirit of time. Do you want me to just give an overview of the project and our reasons that we have three variances as well?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
So I propose that we get the overview, then we let the public speak, and then potentially, you know, we might, we might talk a little bit.
When he, when he says overview, you mean of each one of the five?
No, in general.
The big picture.
All right, well, he can give an overview, but I still need him to go through the five for the record.
Absolutely. Okay, well-
He can do like an introduction and then go through the five.
Sure, yeah. This was kind of a tricky project. The family needs to upgrade the camp and bring it into modern living for the island. And so what we're proposing to do, in the spirit of the ordinance, is tear down and rebuild the camp itself. In the process of doing so, we're proposing to move the building back six feet, maintain the same size and shape of the foundation, so the same footprint, with the exception of the addition of a vestibule on the backside. Add some space by moving the two of the three bedrooms to a second story. And in, what we've also done in the spirit of the ordinance is, in good faith, we've installed a state-approved septic system on the island already. We did that last year. That wasn't easy. So if you'd like me to read through the criteria for the first one?
Yeah.
Okay. Number one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest because this variance would not result in a change of use of the property. The request is intended to reconfigure the floor plan for a more functional layout. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because this doesn't result in any further intrusion into the 50-foot setback area. We're moving the building back six feet, or proposing to move the building back six feet. The overall product, project is intended to reduce the negative impacts to water quality through the implementation of stormwater management measures, and, like I mentioned before, the installation of a new state-approved septic system. I think that number three, substantial justice is done because this variance would allow for more functional new interior space for the family camp. The square footage converted to habitable space would be less than the square footage proposed for non-habitable space, all within the same footprint. Only a small percentage of the existing footprint would be converted. The values of surrounding properties would certainly not be diminished for an improvement to this property. Okay, so special conditions. My take on that is the layout of the, of the existing building isn't really functional for a modern family. A new layout is necessary to bring this camp up to date with current living standards, and currently has a pretty poorly functional floor plan, so.
Okay, keep going.
Okay. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the purposes of the ordinance applicable to the application and the specific application of that provision to the property because the purpose to limit conversion of non-habitable to habitable space does not apply here because the amount of non-habitable space proposed to be added will be larger. There is no proposed further inclusion into the setback area associated with this proposed variance.
It's okay, just keep reading.
Okay. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it simply moves the screen porch area to the other end of the building. That's all I've got.
Okay. Does the board have any, does the board have any specific questions before I open it up to public comment?
Suzanne, Suzanne, have you specified to the public that this is on Lake Wentworth?
It was advertised. It was advertised.
Well, I just want to say in the meet, in this hearing, it's, we're talking about Lake Wentworth. We're not talking about Lake Sockeye or Mirror Lake.
You want me to open it up to the public and then?
Yeah, let's have the-
They've been sitting here a long time. I just soon open it up to them. We'll have our day.
Just to follow up with what you said, it's on an island, it's on Poplar Island, for anybody listening that hasn't seen the paperwork.
Okay. Those in favor would like to speak. Those opposed like to speak. Those would like to speak in general of this application. Yes, ma'am. And please speak up right into that microphone. It's, as you know, as, from sitting out there, you know, it's difficult to hear. And then if you'd be kind enough to tell us your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Rebecca Spear Arnold, trustee of the revocable trust for our cottage at number two Poplar Island on Lake Wentworth. My husband Lee and I support the two variances as presented for the setback and changes to the bedroom for 11 Poplar Island. But beyond that, I am here specifically to speak to the special exemption of height. The Freundes and my family, the Spears and Arnols, have been neighbors and friends since 1965. We share a common boundary in the back of our respective properties. The Freund camp was built and added to with beams on stone and dirt or buried in the wet earth. Thus, the beams have rotted, causing unstable footings and movement of the camp. The old camp was not salvageable. For a new building to be built and properly supported, the structure and subfloor must be raised, and this in turn raises the height of the second-floor bedrooms above the limits on the north side. There is no obstruction or view for any of the four abutters. The house plans are designed to conform to the current footprint, and the drawing looks like a beautiful lake cottage, totally in keeping with the island community. And so I respectfully ask that you favorably consider and approve this special exemption tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to, sure.
I'm Deborah Nixon from Camp Nine on Lake Wentworth, Poplar Island.
Can you bring the microphone up closer, please?
Oh, sure. I'm Deborah Nixon from Camp Nine, Poplar Island, Lake Wentworth, and we abut Camp Eleven on Poplar Island. I'm here representing the Nixon and Walker owners, and we all support this project.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, come on up.
My name is Keith Oddland, and I received a letter from one of the abutters, one of our neighbors that hasn't, wasn't able to be here tonight.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
My name is Keith Oddland. I received a letter from one of our abutters that was unable to attend in person tonight, and I can read that letter, or I can give it to you to read for the record.
Could you read it to us?
Sure.
I'd like that, yeah.
Dear members of the zoning board of adjustment, we are writing in support of our next-door neighbors Heather Freund, Murdoch, and Keith Oddland's proposed variances to build their new home at 11 Poplar Island to replace the demolished original building. Although we are unable to attend this week's meeting in person, we have reviewed their proposed building in variances. We feel they are keeping with the spirit of the island cottages and designed to minimize environmental impact. As residents next door at One Poplar Island, our family has been neighbors of the Freundes for over seven decades. Island living is unique and presents many challenges that require an awareness of our impact on the environment and our neighbors. What we do on the island not only affects our neighbors, but the very lake we swim in. The Freundes have not only been great neighbors, but dedicated stewards of their island property. We have confidence that their proposed rebuild and mitigation efforts are done in good faith. Sincerely, Jennifer Brockway Pierce and Nathaniel Pierce of One Poplar Island.
Would you like a copy? Would you like a copy of this?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
What was your last name, sir?
My name's Thomas O'Rourke, and my wife and I, my wife Karen and I are abutters, and we do also support the variances as proposed tonight.
You care to state, you care to state a reason?
I believe that-
You don't have to.
Oh, I believe that their proposed rebuilding of their camp will maintain the character of the other island camps, which is primarily, of primary interest to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, then. Board members, now any questions from you before we deliberate?
Yeah, I have one question. It's, it's kind of adjacent to the application, but I'm curious, and I'm curious for the future potential projects on this island as well. So you've replaced the septic system-
Put that microphone right closer, your microphone.
Really? The septic system, is that a, is that an aerobic system by any chance?
It's a, yes, it is. It's a geomat system. I believe that's an aerobic system.
Yeah, that's aerobic, but it's in the field and not in the tank, right?
This system is in the field. The geomat system is a field.
Okay. So I noticed that, so there's, there's a ledge here.
That's correct.
So with a fielded system that doesn't treat in the tank, treats in the field, you've got whatever septic loading is making it through the filter, filtration onto that ledge, and then that ledge goes right down into the lake. So had you considered aerobic system which takes care of the bacteria in the tank and then releases what is essentially clean water out of the field, which is, now, now it doesn't get treated in the field, it simply goes, you know, it's a dispersal rather than a treatment area?
I did learn a little bit about the aerobic system when I was taking the installers exam. I believe that the, this particular design was put in place for the island primarily because it can run without power.
Yeah, that's, that's true. The aerobic systems need power, but they can be powered also by small solar collectors.
I think that the purpose was that this could be, you know, used without power, even though, you know, there, there, we were planning on putting solar out here, but Shane wanted to design a system that could operate on its own in case something like that wasn't running at the time.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, and it's, it's too bad that there wouldn't be some real surety that an aerobic system wouldn't be operating when there's basically nobody on the property a good deal of the time. But it would just, it would make so much sense for such a small landmass with potentially so many septic systems surrounded by the lake to have that.
This is actually the, I believe that this is the only septic system on any of the islands on Lake Wentworth.
Right. I'm assuming that over time, these other properties will probably be improved as well, and that's why I bring this up. Okay.
It's a very good point. I hope they don't ask me to install any of the other ones.
Suzanne, Suzanne, Suzanne. I don't think we ever heard. Are you the architect, the builder?
I'm the builder.
Okay.
I, one question I've got is the, you mentioned that you moved the property back six feet, and it's approximately the same footprint, but you're still not quite 50 feet from the shoreline. You, you know, another foot or two and you would have made it, based on what I'm looking at, I think.
Actually, it, it probably would have been a fair amount more than that. It is a, it's a pretty small lot.
Yes.
I believe it's only about 12,000 square feet, something like that. And also, there's an existing shed on the property, which really, it's not very practical to try and move something like that, especially out on the islands. You know, on the mainland, it'd probably be quite a bit easier, maybe get a big forklift in there or something like that. But out on the island, it's not. The proposed new location for the building does, however, still meet all the other property line setbacks.
Yes.
Rear yards, side yards, et cetera. The main purpose that we had of moving the building back the six foot was to, well, one, make it less non-conforming, but also to, because we're, we'd like to expand the roof overhangs to just preserve the building better over time. And by moving it back the six foot, it actually gave us a reduced square foot footprint in the 50-foot setback area. So we thought that that would be important to the town and in spirit of the ordinance.
Fair enough.
Kate, you look like you're ready to just ask a question.
Actually, I have a question for you. The question is, we have an application for special exception and variance. Are we looking at these all at once?
No, one at a time.
Or one at a time.
Because if the variance fails, we don't address the other two.
Okay.
So this variance is to, basically, it's to enclose part of the porch and convert it into, I think, a dining area.
Well-
And then expand the porch, if I'm not mistaken. That's-
Well, it is, but then again, this is a teardown.
I know, I was confused about that because it's a teardown.
Right.
So the design changes, not the actual physical building.
What, I'm sorry?
There were a lot of design changes, though.
The design, where the porch was before, the new design has the dining room where the porch was before. So, yeah, it's a teardown, but they're relating where the new spaces are going with regard to where the old spaces were.
So, so the variance is for an expansion of the habitable area greater than 25%. So by taking that porch and turning it into living space, they're greater, they're, they're turning that into habitable area, and it's greater than the 25%, thus, variance.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'd like to propose that in creating a screen porch, 12 by 18 screen porch on the west side of the building that was previously a bedroom, that that's a fair exchange to make.
And sorry, let me, let me follow up too by saying the expansion is also within the 50-foot setback. So that is a piece of sea as well, is that there can be no further intrusion into the setback.
Virtually the whole building's within the 50-foot setback.
Correct.
Virtually.
Yeah.
Kate, does that help?
50-foot setback is here.
Sure.
Yeah, so that's the only portion that's coming.
So you, when was the original cabin demolished?
Uh, this spring.
This spring, okay.
Yep.
I looked it up. You, you actually applied to, for permission to do that last year, but it never happened?
That's correct.
Yeah. But it has since been raised?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, I understand, if this, if this is approved, you would then have to go through shoreline protection certification with the state and the town?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, and so you chose not to embark on that until you see if this gets passed?
Uh, we already have a state-approved and a town-approved shoreline permit.
You have a town-approved shoreline permit as well?
That's correct.
I had forgotten that. I don't, before my time.
We did that in conjunction with the septic design and approval.
Did you hand that in with us, to us?
It should be on file with the town.
Well, we got the file here.
I don't know if I have. So you got that when you did the septic?
Yes.
Just, if we take a second and just see what you've got here?
Sure.
Paperwork?
So we do have the sewage approval. Uh, we do have the shoreline permit. So this is the renewal. So the original permit was approved April 26, 2024. What other information do you need? And the state-approved permit was approved March 29, 2024. And the local permit, which is good for a year, was renewed April 24, 2025.
Any conditions that we would be interested in knowing about? Or to be aware of?
Um, it is noted that permits were required before the ZBA. I'm not sure the right permits were cited, but... And that no trees may be removed from segment four. Otherwise, it would make that segment below the 25 points that's required. That's it.
Thank you, Shawna.
So could I, just so I understand, I want to read through the three pieces, the three reliefs being requested, so we can all be on the same page. So the special exception is increasing the living area within the existing nonconforming footprint because they're using what used to be a porch that wasn't living area, and now they've got living area within that same area that the porch was, and that's a special exception, right?
No.
The special exception was for height.
Uh, let's see. This is, so it's denied for the following reason: due to the fact that you proposed to enclose a portion of the screen porch area and convert it to living space.
Yes, hold on, yes.
So that's a special exception because, I'll get to your other thing. So that's the special exception part. It's within the same footprint. It's going from porch to living space. The, one of the variances is because they're adding that second floor extra height within the 50 feet. So you know, that expansion that's within the setback area has to be a variance and not a special exception if it's new volume, new area. So that's the variance, number one.
Correct.
Second variance is because when they're moving the house back, it's getting closer to the shed than is permitted. They're supposed to be 20 feet, and it's going to be less than that.
Correct.
So is there any question as to what we're hearing?
No.
Okay.
Explains it.
Um, let me just clarify. Is there a second floor with some kind of living space? Now it's just not as tall? Or is it all on the first floor?
Currently, it would be all on the first floor.
Okay, there's no loft or anything like that up there?
In the existing structure, no.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Um, Chuck, any more questions? Sabat?
No.
Kate?
No.
I know it's, it's hard because it's broken out into three different...
Yeah, but actually...
That's why I numbered them one, two, and three.
Yeah. Actually, I think the plan seems to be nicely integrated, and I'm really impressed with the support of the abutters. So, you know, I think the three pieces together hang together well.
I like the fact that they're broken out separately, though, because in the event, not necessarily this case, any case, we had one recently where two variances were on the same request, and I liked one and I didn't like the other, so I had to deny them both. I really like them separate like this.
We've had them both ways.
Yeah.
It's how the applicant chooses to...
They could be, they could be counseled maybe to do them separately if it would make any difference to them.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the applicant or the abutters or board? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we will deliberate on just this case.
When you say just this case, are you looking at the variance?
We're looking at...
Or the special exception?
We're looking at, no, we're looking at the variance for 17543A1C.
Okay.
And we have to go through the five criteria again.
So could you tell us again, I mean, Audrey summarized it. Audrey summarized it pretty well, but can somebody articulate exactly what this particular variance is covering?
I would ask Shawna to do that.
This is, this is in the application. It's right in front of me. Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
This is due to the fact that by moving the structure back the six feet from the water, you will be within 20 feet distance from the existing shed on the property. Is that the one you wanted to hear? That's like first in line here. I don't, you said one, two, and three, but we don't know which one's which.
So the first one is the section 17543A1C. So that's for the conversion of the porch.
Okay, then my, my papers aren't stapled correctly.
Suppose each one is highlighted?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Let me go back. This, the, um... This is, so this is the special exception.
Okay, so number two, number two is the variance for 17564C. Do you have that?
That's number two.
You might want to number one, two, and three.
And three?
And three is 17543A1, a special exception.
That's number three?
Yeah.
So number one is...
Number one is 17543A1C.
J.
So I do think, I do think the applications got mixed up.
Okay.
I'm gonna say, so...
Which one would you like to hear? Like, just descriptively, which one do you want to hear?
You can see, we had to try and figure out. What happened was when they ran this through the copy machine, they, you have this in your packet. The highlighter blackened out what the actual request was asking for.
I see that.
Okay.
So do you want to do the second floor one? Do you want to do the shed one? Or do you want to do the special exception for the dining room porch?
I'd, I'd like to do the special exception last. I like to care either variance. I don't care which variance you want to do.
Let's do the second floor one first.
And that is, what, 17564C?
Now I do have to ask Shayna because I don't know.
So I, I do think that, that these applications got mixed up. And so the 17543A1C should be the special exception.
Okay.
Okay.
And because that is conversion of the porch to habitable space under 25%. Whereas the height is, uh, the variance, because that's additional, right? The structure may be expanded vertically within...
The number is 17543A1J?
Hold on a second. I'm confusing myself.
Give her a minute, give her a minute.
The structure may be expanded vertically within any setback. Okay, sorry, no, this is right. So C is a, A1C is a variance because it is intrusion into the setback area.
It's the second floor one?
Nope. So that's the conversion of the porch is a variance because any nonconforming portion of the building and structure may be expanded or extended by no more than 25%, which they meet, but no further intrusion into the setback area by special exception. So if they had, if it was not within the 50-foot, then they could do a special exception. But because the nonconformity portion that may be, is being expended, um, expanded or extended because they're taking non-habitable porch, they're turning it into habitable living space.
But they're not changing the footprint?
True.
Okay.
But, so that is a variance because it's in that 50-foot setback area.
And because they're going from non-living, they're going from non-living to living?
Right.
Within the same footprint?
Right.
Which expands the living space.
Correct, the habitable area.
Habitable.
Yep, what we call habitable, yep.
The habitable area is being increased by more than 25% then?
It's under 25%, but it's in the front, it's in the shoreline setback. It's in that 50-foot setback. So they, because it's in that 50-foot setback, they don't qualify for a special exception. They have to get a variance.
All right. And that's the first of the three cases we have listed.
Right, that's the one we're hearing right now, yep. The next, the next one is also a variance because...
Do you have the code number?
Uh, that's for 17564C because they're too close to the shed. They're supposed to be 20 feet from the shed, and they're 15... Yeah, and they're not, thank you, yep. And then the third one, 17543A1J, it says a structure may be expanded vertically within any setback above existing nonconforming beyond the 25%, but must obtain a special exception. So that is a special exception. And it's a special exception because it's above the 25%.
Okay. So the first one on our packet is still for variance?
Is for a variance, yeah, that's the one we just heard. And it's a variance because that expanded or extended area is intruding further into the setback area, and the setback being the 50-foot area.
And that's the shorefront?
Correct.
Further inclusion into the shorefront setback.
Right, because it's expanding habitable space.
If this also includes adding an open porch in another location that's also in the 50-foot, correct?
Would it be adding the open porch? That's, previously, that would be, that would have been the master bedroom. And so what we're proposing to do is where the porch was, we want to make that dining room and...
Uh, hold on.
Oh, you have to come to the microphone too, sorry.
The microphone, and we have to decide...
I apologize for that.
We have to decide if we want to reopen the hearing for him to answer your questions or our questions.
So, you know, we could just, let's take a look at the floor plans, and maybe we can figure it out ourselves.
But he's trying to answer the question, and I have to open the public hearing for that.
Maybe we don't open the public hearing, and we take a look at the floor plans and see if we can figure it out ourselves.
Okay, so you think you can figure it out?
I don't know, but I'd rather not open the public hearing again.
I would also agree to that.
So the front, yes.
We don't have an existing plan, so...
You don't have two site plans, an existing?
Well, we don't have existing floor plan.
Right. But you can see on the, so you've got two site, site plans?
Yeah.
The existing conditions, and it, the title is in the little empty box next to the title block. It's very small, but it says existing conditions above the white space there. And then the proposed conditions, right here. Does everybody see those two?
Yeah.
And if you look at the front porch, you can see a portion of that front porch, and when I say front, waterside porch area being converted into habitable space. And, um... The side porch is, I believe, and I apologize, I would probably have to ask the applicant to confirm this. I believe the side porch, maybe the applicant can just nod, is living space that's being converted to porch. Yes, correct.
And then there's a bit of an overhang outside of the 50-foot area in back between the shed and the back of the house.
Correct. But, but that...
Where do you see deck? Oh, oh.
I believe that's just stairs. It looks like a very small square.
It's also outside the 50 feet.
And... Yes, and so 17543AD says the basis for determining the maximum cumulative expansion limits shall be the existing lawfully nonconforming footprint, measures the overhang extent of the non-habitable, uh, sorry, of the nonconforming structure excluding a pertinent feature such as exterior stairs and non-habitable areas such as open decks.
So porch is non-habitable, correct?
Right, as long as it's, uh, sorry. So exterior stairs and non-habitable open decks.
Or porch.
So a covered porch or screened porch would, yeah.
Is habitable, basically.
Correct. Is everyone, everyone clear? Any other questions?
She's studying and thinking.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, so what we're dealing with, let's see if we can summarize that. And that will be a variance.
Correct.
And it has to do with the setback within the 50-foot shorefront.
Correct. And the conversion of habitable area.
And conversion of habitable area.
Do you want to do the five criteria? Do you want to do five criteria?
Yep. Okay, so our scene, there's no further. I think I did close the public hearing. So we will go through the five criteria, which is somewhere here. One and two, the variance will not be contrary. Two, the public interest because... And two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Well, the proposed use must not conflict with explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance. Well, I think the explicit one is the 50-foot setback. I mean, that's clear in the ordinance. The porch may not be as clear, but the setback to the waterfront is clear, what is expected, and that's what they're asking a variance from. Does it threaten public health, safety, or welfare? Does it threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injurious to the public right? Audrey brought up the issue of the type of septic design.
Yeah, but that's not an issue for us.
Well, it falls under health and safety, health, and we're talking about set, within the setback to the shorefront.
But the septic system isn't within the setback. It's also a vast improvement over what was there.
Okay.
Um, so there's no, there's, so the, my understanding is the front of this part was there before and now it's further back. Is that what we get from this part here? That six feet further back is actually pertaining to this front wall here, isn't it?
I think the whole structure is moving six feet back.
It is, but that's the closest to the water.
Right.
So because it's already within the building envelope, even though it was previously non-habitable, I don't really see how it has much of any impact on number one, or number two, or number three.
I agree.
I agree, and as, as far as public interest is concerned, I think the public has already spoken, so.
Well, yes, but that's not what the public, that's not the public they mean when they say public interest.
Okay, so I'm taking poetic license here.
Yeah.
Good try, good try, Chuck. Okay, so, um, number three, substantial justice is done. Audrey highlighted that. Any want to clarify that?
There's no benefit, there's no, um, there's no harm to the public of having that enclosed , uh, living space rather than a covered porch.
Okay. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. I think in this case, we heard the public say that they feel it's going to be an improvement. And since they're the abutters to the property, if they don't think it affects property values, I don't see why we wouldn't concur with what they're saying.
I certainly have no information that would conflict with that.
Well, I accept their testimony, unless somebody disagrees. I see no disagreement. Uh, number five, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship means because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, in the zone, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. The applicant, the applicant must establish that the property is burdened by the zoning restriction in a manner that is distinct from other similarly situated properties. The zoning, the applicant must establish that because of the special condition of the property, the restriction as applied to the property does not serve the purpose of fair and substantial, and that the applicant must establish that the special condition of the property causes the proposed use to be reasonable. The use must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
So the only, the one thing that I can see is it, it really can't go back anymore. It probably could, but it, there's a lot of big trees there, and it wouldn't be beneficial to gain a few more feet back from the shore by cutting more big trees. I don't, I don't know how this, um, how this older building relates to the other older buildings on the parcel, as far as whether they're also within the 50 feet or not. We don't have that information. It looks like a lot of them are.
What other buildings are you talking about?
On the, on the island.
The neighbors, okay.
Yeah. You think it's a smaller lot?
I'm not saying it's smaller, but it's relatively small. There's not a lot of room to move around.
I'm trying to find, you know, I'm trying to find something, um, that's different about it that would go to that.
Unique, something that is unique.
Substantial, the uniqueness of the lot. And it looks like it, it's about medium size. There's a couple who are bigger, there's several smaller. Everybody seems, most people seem to be within 50 feet of the lake. I don't know, we don't have enough information about how the rest of the island is treed as far as whether this is uniquely, has, you know, a lot of big pines uniquely separate from the other lots. Just trying to find something that's unique about it.
I guess the fact is that it's replacing an existing structure. The existing structure was non-conforming, because there's really no place to go on, on, on that lot. So there's still no place for them to go with a new structure. I don't know if that makes it unique, but it certainly is a hardship.
That's a good point of view, but it, it does the same apply to other parcels on the island? Are they in the same situation if they wanted to tear down and rebuild? No place to go? I don't know, I haven't, I haven't looked at the overall map of the island.
Um, well, there's an, oh, there's a small overall map on the top page of the site plan.
So don't forget, you're comparing this shorefront residential property to all other shorefront residential properties, not just island properties, right? So is it unique compared to all other shore?
Well, in the zone, in that zone.
Right, in the shorefront residential.
Well, I think it's both.
Well, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I think it's both the immediate neighborhood and, and potentially the zone.
Well, it certainly seems like a reasonable use.
Yeah, but we're trying to find out what's unique.
So what, you know, if we're saying, if, if this one isn't unique, then, um, because it's essentially the same as one, two, three, four, five of the seven, more than, six of the other seven parcels on, in the immediate neighborhood on that island. I mean, they're all unique because they're on an island. So may, maybe, maybe the island is unique in the zone.
No, because there's like, she just said, there's other islands all around in the town of Wolfboro.
Maybe all the islands are unique.
They're all, they're all.
They're different than, than non-islands, but I, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't gotten to that.
Well, most of them will have that shore, shorefront restriction. Most of them will, all the islands will have that shorefront setback requirement from the water.
Well, is the uniqueness, is the relationship to that shed, does that have anything to do with it and the difficulty of moving the shed, or any of?
No, that's, I don't think so. That would be an argument on the other side. Well, they could just move the shed and move this further back. But we're arguing.
But they talked about how hard it was to move the shed.
The fact that it's really difficult to move that shed makes this property unique, different than any of the other shorefront residential properties that are not on islands.
We don't know that, though.
Well, that's what they presented, that it was very hard to move the shed, maybe because of the foundation that it's on, that it's.
I think.
Or for a permanent kind of structure.
It's hard to get equipment onto the island to move a shed like that to another spot on the lot. But the other thing you could look at is you could, even if you tore down the shed completely and moved the, the, the house further back.
Or attacked it.
It's still, it still wouldn't, uh, it would still be non-conforming. We can't move out of that 50-foot.
But why is that unique?
Um, that I don't know. I'm just saying we can't, there's nowhere, nowhere to go. Even if they tear down the shed, they can't make it non-conforming.
If they took the shed down, would they still be within that, um, shoreline setback?
They would still violate that fight, the setback, yes. Because they're 20 feet from the shed, and, um, the shed isn't that big, even if the shed is 20 feet.
I think that the bigger issue is their septic tank is closer to the house than the shed, so as far as moving things, a shed is a lot easier than a septic tank.
So I guess the general hardship is that there is no place to go here.
The hardship can't be the same as the reason for the request, though.
Right.
Because then you get circular. Then every request would be a hardship.
But not everybody doesn't have a place to go. I mean, in this situation, I mean, in some cases, don't some people really just not have a place to go? Why couldn't it be the same thing?
But is, is that unique?
Yeah. I think it's unique when people just literally have no place to go.
Yeah.
I mean, they can't move because it, even if they took the shed down, the septic system prevents them from using certain portions of the lot. And they're trying to keep the house in somewhat of the same footprint, as I understand it, right?
Yes.
So.
So articulate number five A. Because that's what we need, is an articulation of the hardship based on the uniqueness of the lot. And if you can articulate that, then that's, you know, that's what we're looking for.
Uh, A is talking about, um, an alternative to A and B. The applicant can satisfy the unnecessary hardship requirement by establishing that because of the special conditions of the property, there is no reasonable use that can be made of the property that would be permitted under the ordinance. If there is any reasonable use, including an existing use, that is permitted under the ordinance, this alternative is not available.
No, you can't use that sec, you can't use that second part unless, unless you've already met the first part. So, so the, part A, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the purpose of the ordinance.
The second test, if the applicant cannot meet the first test, they may still be able to secure a variance if the property satisfies the second test, 67433. An unreasonable, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. This standard is a difficult one to meet. In order to satisfy that test, the deprivation resulting from application of the ordinance must be so great as to effectively prevent the owner from making any reasonable use of the land. If the land is reasonably suitable for permitted use, then there is no hardship and no grounds for a variance, even if the other four parts of the five-part test have been met. Governor's Island. I can keep reading.
So to me, that, that's saying that they can't use it for a camp because of some, some reason, and they've been using it for a camp, and so how would that even apply?
So again, going back to the hardship criteria, the unique characteristics of the lot need to be in comparison to all of the lots in the shorefront district. Not just island lots, or not just the, this particular island lots. And so I think it does, and it doesn't have to be like the one lot in the district that is so unique from all the other ones.
It doesn't have to be the only one.
Right.
It can be, uh, un, you know, very uncommon. But, but the A says, "From other properties in the area," doesn't say from the zone. So I know you've mentioned that several times, but I'm not sure where that's coming from.
It's coming from our attorney.
But the law that's written here says.
I'm reading, I'm reading from.
Okay, but the law says, "From other properties in the area."
It's the zone.
The law says the area.
Case law says the zone.
Okay, I, I guess we often use the area, not the zone. I mean, the zone might be important also, but I don't think you can throw away the area and only look at the zone. And I'm not really sure it matters in this case.
Well, what do we want to do? We want to make a decision tonight? We've got 90 days. Do we want to continue this and do more homework on it?
I'm just saying, if somebody can make an articulation that, you know, five A.
Well, I don't know if we can, look, we've been like a half an hour just trying, and I'm not being, um, negative, but I'd rather take the time to do some more homework and feel comfortable with the approval or disapproval than to make it now when we've got this cloud hanging over us. I think we need to do some more homework.
I agree that sometimes when you step back and you think about things, things come to you that you didn't think about when you were sitting at the table.
I would like to make a motion to continue this hearing until, um, you guys set a date for me.
Do we want to talk about the other ones generally, or not yet?
No.
The other relief?
You mean the other two cases?
Right.
Well, look, if this, if, no, if this doesn't, if this doesn't pass, then we won't be talking about the other ones.
Well, can, can we talk a little bit more about number five? What, what they want to do is get a little more habitable space, because it's a small place with two bedrooms. They have a growing family. It was a couple that owned the place.
Yeah.
And now the couple, both members of the couple have died, and so they have a little growing family, it's a new generation, and they're trying to see if they can get.
That's, that's, we have to think about the land.
Well, I'm also thinking about the, the use of the property by the property owner and what, you know, what the.
The use of the land, not the use that a property wants to use the house for.
So.
It goes to the tide, to the land.
So what's?
No, I don't, you know what? I don't want to try and debate, uh, analyze or dissect what you're trying to do. I've made a motion to continue for us to get, Shauna, to get a little more information and help us with this, and for us to feel comfortable. I have no pre-concluded thought of approval or disapproval at this time. I'm totally thinking I'm confused, and I don't think we have the answers that we need. So I'd like to continue, we could continue, we've got 90 days, but I'm willing to have an extra meeting for this if the board would like, but I don't think we should try to, off the top of our head, make a decision.
I guess, yeah, I, I would.
Would you second that motion, Audrey, to continue?
I would.
Thank you.
And so I think the continuance is to, are we asking the applicant maybe to provide some more information?
Yes.
To show that he meets the hardship criteria?
Yes.
That would be the first place to start, yeah.
And did you have something on, uh, habitable space? No, no? Floor area or?
No, I, I just.
Septic, the septic?
I just, the, the purpose written on here for five A doesn't, you know, doesn't really meet the question in my mind.
Okay.
And I think they can do some better articulation there to get to where we need to be with regard to the special conditions of the property.
Suzanne.
And then I have to ask Shauna a question, because I don't know the answer to this. Whereas we didn't open the other two, if we, now that we've heard a presentation, if we have questions about that, is it inappropriate to funnel those questions to you, whereas we didn't open the hearing?
If it was specific questions about the app, the app, what was submitted? And you want additional submittal, then we can do that, yep.
Don't we have to open those in order to continue those?
No, oh, yes, yes, I do.
We do have to continue them to date search.
Yes, I do, yes, I do. Thank you for reminding me.
So Beth had a question as well.
Well, in terms of things that he could provide for us, is it helpful in any way to get kind of?
kind of a layout of what the previous building was? I mean, we don't, like, we don't have anything to compare the new to the old other than the actual.
I thought we did.
Well, we just have the external drawing, but we don't have like the configurations of the.
Floor plans?
Floor plan, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if that's, if that is helpful in any way in trying to determine.
If it helps, if it helps you, then yeah. Therefore, it would help us too.
I don't get to vote, but I'm just thinking it might be helpful to you in some way.
Okay, I've got a second to continue. Well, I haven't opened the other two.
Right.
So I can't continue them.
Well, we need to open them.
You've got a motion for this one, to continue this one.
Okay, so I see. Open and close, open and close. Okay, so I've got a motion and seconded to continue. Now, folks, what dates would you like? Would you like next week or would you like two weeks from now? It doesn't matter to me. I sent you all those.
Maybe you should ask the applicant if we're asking him.
We've got five people to get together.
I know, but I'm suggesting he's, we're asking him to maybe give us information that may help us with the hardship. So I would say, how much time do you need in order to provide more information to us? Instead of us just saying, let's meet next week. That's just a thought, if you're asking him.
I think he knows this inside and out. He did a pretty good presentation.
Well, I mean, the fact is, the answer to five A does not answer five A. And I think that they need to articulate that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sitting here trying to think of something to say when it's, you know, I really should be looking at what they say and saying that meets it or doesn't meet it.
All right, so we'll add that to the list. Okay, so what date? Chuck, you got your calendar there?
Yeah.
Ninth or the?
I can't do the ninth.
Okay, so the next one's the 20 what?
Well, the 23rd is two weeks after that. I can do that one.
Okay, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
I will not be able to make the 23rd. It's the LRPC annual meeting.
Okay, well, you can give us the info.
Yep.
So does the majority? Because we have an alternate.
You're voting on it, right?
Yeah.
You're voting, right?
Well, no, it's been seconded. I'm trying to get a date.
It has to be continued to date certain.
We had to vote to continue.
Sabette.
I'm hearing a lot of mumblings over there. Maybe you could tell them they don't necessarily need to come for this next one.
What, Sabette, what?
I don't know. No, I'm suggesting, yes, I'm fine with the 23rd.
Yeah, we have the public comment, except for not on the other two ones, other two cases. I suspect it'll be similar public comment on the other two cases.
So it's not necessary to come back?
Oh, Sabette, come on. Oh, you can't.
Okay.
Hang on. We're gonna, we're gonna come up with a time, certain. I'm trying to find out how many. I'm trying to find out how many of the members can make it, either the ninth or the 23rd.
I can do either.
You can or can't?
I can.
Kate?
Well, I could do the ninth if I had to.
Okay. Chuck, how do you feel if you're not here for the ninth? Are you okay with Sabette sitting here for you? Okay, so to.
Did you ask Sabette?
I'm fine with any date.
Yes, she's here.
Jody free?
Yeah, you okay with a date?
That's next week.
It usually is. Okay, so to expedite this, not put it off, let's do it on the ninth. So in the motion, it would be to continue case number.
The motion was made, right?
Yeah, the motion's been made to continue to.
To date certain of June 9th?
June 9th, 6 o'clock here in the town hall. And then I will go ahead and open.
So let's vote on that one?
Oh, yes, thank you. And the vote, roll call vote. Audrey?
Yes.
Kate?
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, you don't want to continue it? You want to do it tonight?
They do.
That's his vote, that's his vote.
I don't know.
Chuck?
What was your vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you all voted. Okay, so the first case, I'm going to number one, two and three. The first case is continued to June 9th, 6 o'clock here in the town hall. So then two and three, I'm going to do those together.
Okay, that's fine.
Two and three.
You're gonna open them?
I'm going to open and close. So two and three is case number 14 V 25. And case, the third case is 15 SE, special exception 25. I would motion to also continue those to June 9th, 6 o'clock here in the town hall.
Second.
I have Audrey seconded, roll call vote. Audrey?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
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 We have that unanimous. Now, I will reopen the hearing that we continued as a courtesy for public comment. Is this, it seems as though, it's kind of unusual to do that, but if the board would like to do that, we can do that.
Only comment on the application, not on the process.
All the comments on the application as well?
Only comment on application, not on the process.
Oh, okay.
Agree.
I see your frustration. It's no more than what we have. Use the microphone?
No, because that's not a comment on the application.
All right, applicant.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
The public can't hear you. And we can't. So would you be kind enough to address us at this last moment?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify with the board. When we do go to review, we're going to call this number one again. Are we clear that we're already finished with the application with the exception of number five? And we just want some clarification as to the, what makes this property unique? Or do you want to reopen the public session and let me speak to how this property might be unique? I wasn't really given a chance to comment further on that.
Well, I guess we were expecting to find it here on the application.
Well, this one in particular was, to be honest, I didn't really understand it very well. I couldn't really wrap my head around how changing from a screen porch to a dining room, but you're also moving the house back, so it's a new house. There's only one foot by 22 foot that actually was screen porch at this point, that's going to be the new house at this point. Plus, there's going to be a way bigger screen porch on the other end of the building. So like I said, to be honest, I didn't even really have quite a grasp of what we're talking about here. But as far as the uniqueness of this property goes and, you know, the special conditions that make it so.
Could I suggest maybe that you come into the office and maybe Shawna can give you some guidance on the five criteria and how this is set up?
We also need that answered for the other two, at least one of the other two pieces as well, so.
Can you do that?
Yes. So I can talk to you about what they are going to be looking for, for that particular criteria.
And you have office hours on Tuesday, correct?
Tomorrow, yep.
Tomorrow, okay.
Thank you, thank you for your cooperation.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we are legally bound to follow this.
I understand.
Can you make tomorrow?
Absolutely.
All right.
And next week?
I'll be there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're done with the applications and I would like to forego the minutes at this meeting this time. There is a difficulty with the one from April 7th.
Let's see.
And you may or may not know, under new business, Bill Scott is going to be our new planning director and he will start August 4th. Audrey and I met with him and it was a pleasure to meet him. He will be sitting in at our meetings, much like Shawna is doing. And we also have a new administrative assistant, Janine Provost. And she is the person that, if we have any questions, she is the person that we go to. She is the chief bottle washer for the ZBA. And other than that, I have no other new business and I'd like to defer the minutes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Shawna.